And continuing as they take to enhance their life savings. And whereas it is important to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by design. National EMS Week, which has been formalized on November fourth nineteen thirty four by President Gerald Ford. This year, fifty first anniversary of EMS Week. Now, therefore, the mayor of Arkansas City, Kansas, that hereby claims the week of May fifteenth through the twenty fourth two thousand twenty twenty five. As National EMS Week. In Arkansas City and encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities and recognize the shared theme. We care for everyone.
All right, we all made it through. That's good. Okay, number three, the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
Got a motion and second to approve the consent agenda, further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Looks like we're ready for new business, city manager department.
Item number one is an ordinance adopting a budgeted pay plan to become effective May seventeenth, two thousand twenty five.
Well, I'll let Kyle explain the changes that are needed, what he's requesting.
Evening Vice Mayor and members of the commission. Presenting our new pay ordinance for my department environmental services. And what this would entail is adding in a line replacement maintenance worker, one through three. To begin that process as well as adding in leads for the replacement lead, distribution and collection lead. Help separate duties and make them more specialized as the department grows more. And as you know, the reasoning for this is in. Two thousand twenty four, the city commission formally approved a revised water rate structure. Designed to enhance the operational capacity of the environmental services department. And then that was part of the projects that was wrapped up in there was getting this line replacement program going, and this is adding those positions to begin that process. A note to this is that. These two positions this year will be covered by the vacancy of the assistant environmental services superintendent. Throughout the year of two thousand twenty five. The two new positions, line replacement maintenance worker, one, two, and three, and based upon employee qualifications will be added to the personnel budgets starting the year two thousand twenty six. Is there any questions?
This has been the plan all along, so.
That being said, I make a motion and ordinance adopting the budget plan to become effective, 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 May seventeenth, two thousand twenty five.
Got a motion and second. To approve the ordinance adopting the budget play plan effective. May seventeenth, twenty twenty five, further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
It's a roll call, I'm sorry. Yeah, we get you every time. Commissioner Spillman?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Tweedy?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Stover?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number two is a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to enter into an agreement with professional engineering consultants, P E C. To serve as the city's representative for the water treatment plant green sand filter improvement project for an amount not to exceed one hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars.
So as you recall, the city was awarded a, well, it was a loan with a hundred percent forgiveness for, on the revolve, the. Revolving loan fund from K H and E for a green sand filter.
How much was that loan, it was over two million?
Yeah, two million eighty nine. So, so with part of this, part of this project is that we need a engineer representing for the city, so. Burns and Mack and will be the, the kind of the, the design build engineer. And then we have to have an engineer that represents us, so peace, Nick put out. R F Ps for engineers and P E C was the one that we chose to, as the best fit for us. And so that's a hundred and seventeen thousand, not to exceed a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, and they'll basically watch out for. The project for our interest, they'll, they'll put in the pay request, the K H and E. When it's time to pay vendors and things and manage all that paperwork as well, so.
Now, we don't approve this, we don't get the loan?
Yeah, we have to have a representative engineer in this process, it's just part, part of the, of the deal, so.
And is that rolled into the loan or are we responsible for that?
We'll be responsible for that, so that'll come out of the water budget, and I believe it's. It's coming out of the water treatment facility capital improvement budget.
I'll move that we approve a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to. Enter into an agreement with the professional engineering consultants, P E C, to serve as the city's representative for the water treatment plant grand sand, green sand filter improvement project for an amount not to exceed one hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and fifty.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? This is a voice vote, right? Well then, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Item number three is a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to execute an agreement number. Nine, three, seven, dash, two, four, with the secretary of transportation and the Kansas Department of Transportation, transportation, K dot. For participation in the Kansas local bridge improvement program, project number eighteen, dash, U, dash, two, five, six, three, dash, oh, one, to replace the F Street Bridge.
So this agreement is between the city and K dot, and it's for the grant, like you said, for the, to replace the F Street Bridge. So the, the grant is not to exceed seven hundred thousand dollars. The engineered estimate on the project at this point is seven hundred and seventy eight thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars. So the estimated city local share would be one hundred and seventy thousand, six twenty eight, again, these are all estimates and.
What will that be coming out of, Randy?
So that will come out of. Down here to the, so, special highway, streets and payment to contractors, so. It's, it's budgeted, it was a, we've had the grant app in for a while and knew we were approved, so they are budgeted funds, so. So this is just the agreement between the city and the, and the state to accept the grant and move that project forward, so.
That, that's just going to cover the bridge, right, that's not going to do any railroad track removal that's been abandoned for many years, it's still there.
Yep, it'll do the bridge and a little bit of the approach to the bridge, but yeah, it won't go. It won't extend much past that.
I move that we authorize the city of Arkansas City to execute an agreement number nine, three, seven, dash, two, four, with the secretary of transportation and the Kansas Department. Of transportation for participation in the Kansas local bridge improvement program, project number eighteen, U, two, five, six, three, day, zero, one, to replace the F Street Bridge.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
So item number four is an ordinance exempting the application K S A four, one, seven, one, ninety. To allow the sale and consumption of alcoholic liquor at a designated area of the east corner. Of Central Avenue and Summit Street for one day commencing Friday, June seventh, two thousand twenty five. And this request was submitted in by. Brandy Webb, owner of the Sam Bar. Merchants in Motion is having an event, their last event got rained out, so this is a request to have this. Beer garden down in our downtown as part of the common consumption area. Trying to get to the item here. And so it's, they're going to block off the roads, she knows to have the plastic cups, follow all the rules, just like.
And she's done that before, I mean.
Several times.
Wouldn't they have any problems?
No, no, I feel like it's kind of the same, same crowd that comes and behaves and sings karaoke and hangs out, so. But yeah, this is during their family fun downtown event, just that day.
Thursdays?
Um, that's on a Saturday, June seventh, yeah, they're, they're, or sorry, Friday, they're changing from Thursdays to Fridays this year, trying that out. Going forward with some events, so we might see a few requests for that coming in.
Friday's the sixth.
So is it the sixth? Do I have that wrong?
On June sixth?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think.
Hold on, I have an amendment. You are right, so it would be for Saturday, the seventh, so I would have to amend that ordinance. To state Saturday since I wrote it in there, but yeah, so it would be, it's Saturday, the seventh of June, yeah.
Well, that being said, if on the amendment for Saturday. June seventh, I make a motion, the resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City approve a temporary extension of the license premise at Gloria's Bar located.
Yeah, we have more than one, so this is item number four, yeah, I know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is this it right here?
So, yeah, so she, her one.
Okay.
Area that she can have is right there at Brittany Dunlap's insurance agency corner. So that's her one area she can serve outside of her main for the common consumption, so it will always for her, for now, be at that corner, so.
She's been doing that.
That was, that was the same place they used to do it on Thursdays, the first Thursdays.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make, I'll make a motion, the ordinance exempting the application of K S A forty one, day, seven, one, nine, to allow the sales of some alcohol liquor. At a designated area of the east corner of Central Avenue and Summit Street for one day commencing Saturday, June the eighth, is that right?
Seventh.
Seventh, okay. Two thousand twenty five.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any other discussion?
I'm just double checking that I, they told me the right date. Cause I'm kind of nervous, they did just post today what day it is, it is Saturday, so we're good. Yeah, Saturday the seventh, we're talking about Friday stuff.
So it's a roll call?
Oh, yep, so this is as amended, so Commissioner Spillman?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Tweedy?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Stover?
Yes.
Yeah, since this actual ordinance says Friday, you will, we will have to amend that.
We just amended it in the motion, and so I will amend the final signed copy. Yeah. Item number five is one of the added items that we did for tonight, and this is the resolution authorizing. The city of Arkansas City to approve a temporary extension of I S A's premise at Gloria's Bar. Located at one, one, two, one, South Summit Street to allow sale and consumption of alcoholic liquor on. Public property pursuant to K S A four, one, two, six, oh, eight. And I do have a map for the commission to look at. So the state, through that K S A four, one, two, six, zero, eight, they do allow the cities to write a resolution. To temporarily allow them to encroach onto the public street or property. Owned by the city. For an extension of license premise, so this request. Has to go through commission approval and then we'll go to the state with the application to allow her to have her cornhole event, so is what she's wanting to have there. And.
So we're closing off the street?
Yes, so that little street right there is kind of where people park almost, at her bar, there's limited parking. So she's just, I put the X's are the barricades where the, she's wanting to block that off. And then the green line, so she'll come from her building and fence. So I want to say last year we did an extension of premise so she could build her fence back patio area, she's going to open that fence. And connect it on through all the way to the curb of that street, of that road there on West Tyler. By her connecting, I did call the state today, that allows her to sell and serve from inside the premise. And partners to walk out and play cornhole, where she doesn't have to get separate alcohol, have a separate, separate stand or a separate special event permit, so it's a little different. Than our beer gardens, but she still has to have the signs up. And no one under twenty one can be in that area.
And what's the date on this, the winter date?
So she's doing it on the same day, Saturday, the seventh.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and it's from four to midnight on that one.
Is it like a one day, a one day event?
Yes, one day event, mhm.
With that being said, I move we authorize the city of Arkansas City to approve a temporary extension of license premises to Gloria's Bar located at. Eleven, twenty one, South Summit to allow the sale and consumption of alcoholic liquor on public property pursuant to K S A forty one, dash, two, six, oh, eight.
Second.
Got a motion and a second?
I have a question. How come the one before that was a roll call, this one is just a voice vote?
Right. So you can go either way on it, is what I learned, but, so the ordinance, we have generally done that for the beer gardens. So with the resolution, it's a temporary, they're both temporary, but, but I see the beer gardens being a normal request that we do all the time at the parks and stuff, so, I mean.
I just answered the question.
Yeah, I know, I had the same question to the state, so they, they allow per that statute through resolution or, if you want to make it ordinance.
No, no, I just, I just answered the question.
Does Larry have?
It's a roll call. Okay. Resolution is. Okay, I'm with you, ma'am, I should know that.
Yeah, no, it seems funny, because it's all about alcohol's confusing.
But, but she's writing statute, sometimes it says that the governing body can pass an ordinance or a resolution.
Right.
But I think it's a good idea, good practice you have where you, where you set that off and you're not changing law, you're resolving to let it happen again.
Got a motion and a second, then no further discussion? All in favor signify aye. I say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, so the next item, I passed out packets for you, this is what I went to the printer for. And why we were scrambling to get started, so got it all done. This one is a resolution certifying legal authority to apply to the Kansas Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program. From the Kansas Department of Commerce for Parks and Facility System Improvements. I also want to add, if you look into that resolution in that packet, this does allow the mayor and the clerk or the mayor's designated to sign and actually apply for this. And I know Randy and Crystal Henning here for Rancen Financial.
Hi, good evening, Crystal Henning with Rancen Financial. So we're going to go over just a few things first, I thought I would let you know. Sorry for the last minute paperwork here, we were waiting on the architect to update the costs, and so he got it to me on my drive here. So it took a little bit to get our paperwork printed, so my apologies to that. Our estimated total cost is one million, two hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and sixty eight, we're going to ask the Department of Commerce to pay nine hundred and ninety two thousand, one hundred and thirty four dollars. They have changed a little bit of how the Department of Commerce works now, they've changed to where they have two pots of money, large projects and small projects. This one's going to go in their large project pot. It's now a rolling round, so we can apply, clear up until the number fifteen. But every fifteenth of the month, they will draw down the applications, review them, and they're hoping to have them awarded by the end of each month. So they're trying to move very quickly to get the money out, so that's why we're trying to move quickly with them.
Now this project can just move the splash pad and the playground.
Same project we applied for before, they have doubled the money this year and then the revolving, or the multiple rounds. And so we wanted to get in one of the first, first round and that way we have a better chance of getting it.
Of course, with the playground or the splash pad, it's going to take some sewer lines and water lines to get to it and everything.
Oh, everything's exactly the same as the last application process.
I had a meeting with the Department of Commerce and they highly encouraged you guys to put in an application again, they're very excited about you guys, so. I'm excited to get this one rolling again. If you have any questions on this, on your resolution, it's straightforward from, from the state, so.
We applied earlier, you know, and it got turned down, so.
Yes, and that's why I had a, a meeting with them, I said, let's talk about my application, what do you, what do you guys want to see different, and they basically just said. The way their pots of money were, they had thirty four applications, and it's parks, community centers, senior centers, they had it all in one pot. And so now with the large project and small project pot, plus they have additional money, so they took. The leftover money from all the other years and they reallocated it so they can give away this year, so they have quite a bit more money this year, and so. We have a really great chance, they're excited for you guys.
That being said, I make a resolution serving the legal authority to apply for the Kansas Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program for the Kansas Department of Commerce for Parks and Facility Systems Improvements.
Second. So we got motion and a second, any further discussion?
Does that hundred and thirty thousand we set aside for equipment go?
Yeah.
Be included in this?
It will, the, the money we budgeted for equipment will, will be used with this as part of our matching grant, and then also B J Wilkins. Has agreed to honor the grant that we received, you know, on, on the last application, they're allowing us to, to use it on this one.
Okay.
So again, it's all upon condition of getting the grant, so.
Yeah, sure, yeah. Motion is second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries.
So item number seven is a resolution authorizing the Kansas Department of Conver, oh, sorry, a resolution assuring. The Kansas Department of Commerce that funds will be continually provided for the operation and maintenance of improvements to the park system to be financed with community development block grant funds.
So this one is just a straightforward, straight from the state, they want to make sure that if they're going to fund a project, that we're going to take care of it and be for it.
I'll move that we approve a resolution assuring the Kansas Department of Commerce. Funds will be continually provided for the operation and maintenance of improvements to the park system to be financed with the community development block grant funds.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, do you guys have any more questions about our application?
We get it.
Get it done for us.
Get it, get it done, yeah.
Next up will be our public hearing, which we will hold during city hours. And then our goal is to have the application in before the fifteenth, before they draw down the first time. Application's just opened on the first, so we should be able to get in the first round as well.
Right, the fifteenth of this month?
Yes, yeah.
That's coming quick.
We're getting around to it.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Crystal, for all your work today on that.
Environmental Services?
Yeah, item number one is a resolution authorizing a change order submitted by Wildcat Construction. For additional work on the well sixteen offset project, including water main wet tap hydrant replacement and steel beam relocation adjustments for an amount not to exceed thirteen thousand, three hundred and ninety two dollars.
Well, again, Vice Mayor, members of the commission. I have before you, it's a change order for three items on our well sixteen, well four offset project. And one of them is perform a wet tap on the existing raw water line to reduce the risk of water supply interruption and to accelerate the project schedule. If we didn't do this, we would have to shut down entire well field and that could delay the project quite a bit. Number two, replace the fire hydrant for regulation testing and well startup, also minimize the risk of environmental contamination or contamination from temporary piping. This is just upgrading the fire hydrant to a bigger fire hydrant to help meet K D H E standards. Lastly, relocate steel beams in the field to accommodate and coordinate with the installation of the well casing, and this was to help figure out. Finally, getting in the sanitary steel, sanitary seal that is required by K D H E in place and taken care of. Then all of that in total brings the necessary modifications associated with these changes, the change to the contract price is thirteen thousand, three hundred and thirty two dollars and ninety two cents, bringing the revised contract total to six hundred and fifty one thousand, six hundred and thirty two. Ninety two cents, which sees the original authorized amount, thus necessitating formal approval for this change order.
Where's the two, six inch high ground going to go?
It's going to go out there for the well to be used for M P A testing, K D H E requires.
Even though you said you weren't going to come back and ask for it.
There's always something that needs done on our part, true.
I will move that we approve a resolution authorizing a change order submitted by Wildcat Construction for additional work on. Well, number sixteen offset project, including water main, wet tap, hydrant, hydrant replacement and steel beam relocation adjustments. For an amount not to exceed thirteen thousand, three hundred and thirty two dollars and ninety two cents.
Second.
One question, do, do we have money in this someplace?
Yes, even though it wasn't originally in the budget, we have room in the budget for this.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Try to upgrade to a more secure system than what's established already there. The Knox box master key is our way of being able to not destroy a fifteen thousand dollar door, but the businesses around our area, including this one. Basically puts your master key in there and then we're the only ones, so even if Winfield has one. Winfield controls their own Knox box and we control our own Knox box, so literally nobody can grab any of those keys from ours.
Something we need.
I move we approve a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to accept a quote submitted by Knox for master key control system upgrades. For an estimated amount of twelve thousand, nine hundred and seventy three dollars.
Second.
Do we have a system like that now, or we're, this is going to be a new install?
We have a system, but this is going to be much greater security.
Okay.
So this is literally going to allow us that if we have somebody that leaves, it just, we can wipe them completely out of the system, they can't have access to it.
Okay.
All right, we got motion and a second, any further discussion? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Item number two is a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to purchase a new fire pump and gearbox for engine fifty one from Conrad Equipment. For the amount of six hun, sorry, sixty nine thousand, three hundred and six, thirty seven dollars and five cents due to catastrophic mechanical failure.
So engine fifty one right now is sitting in Oklahoma City with Conrad Fire. We have no idea where the, the oil went from that gearbox, it started making some noise. I had a couple E V Ts come by, take a look at it, and we ended up with just missing gears out of it, completely destroyed the box. We talked about looking at, basically, even looking at, oh, hold one second here, so I have it correctly. Redoing the pump that we already had, or refurbish. The problem with that was that in order to do the refurbish, we would have to take the pump out of the truck, send it off. And then check and see if it was even able to be refurbished, whether the core was good or not. By doing that, we're taking a humongous chance of not even being able to refurbish that and then paying for the shipping and taking it there and everything else. Pierce does already have five pumps sitting on a shelf that are brand new that we've put in. One of the questions was along the warranty, it is a three year warranty or eighteen hundred hours, whichever one comes first, three years will end up coming first before the eighteen hundred hours. Unfortunately, right now, our only engine that we have is also a rescue truck. So if we have a vehicle accident and a structural fire at the same time, it's going to put us in one heck of a bind. So by doing this, allows us to get that engine, which is still a good truck, back online, and then when the tinge comes in, hopefully this year. That puts this one in reserve so that if we do have catastrophic failure or an accident happen, that gives us a truck here.
How soon can they do that on approval?
That's going to be as soon as I give them a call, they'll go ahead and order it and send it that way, so on the refurbish, it was going to be up to three months turnaround time, this should limit that and come back a lot faster. But that all depends on shipping, getting there, and then, then yanking that out. Puck was supposed to be designed for the ease of mechanics. Have you ever seen the inside of those, there's nothing easy about it. Have you ever seen the inside of those? There's nothing easy about it.
Randy, where's that money gonna come from?
I don't have those numbers in, yeah, hold on.
I got it on the screen.
I'm sorry, I got, uh, my head's a little, so that's on the, uh.
The pump?
Yeah.
Seventy-four oh five?
Yeah, machinery and equipment.
Where's, where's Conrad Fire located?
There's a number of different Conrad Fire locations for Pierce. Uh, there's some in Kansas City, Oklahoma City, Tulsa has one. There's a couple other areas. I'd have to get on there on the map. But Pierce's is its own manufacturer, and then Conrad does all the Pierce work for.
Would it be financially viable for us to go pick it up?
The pump? Uh, probably not.
Okay.
I mean, the shipping on that freight charge was a thousand dollars.
Okay.
So, I mean, we're probably gonna spend that when we go load up a truck and then send everybody out there to go get it. Probably gonna spend the same amount.
So that'll come out of general fund, and it's the firing EMS, uh, fund, and then motor vehicle repair department.
Okay.
Got a motion, we approve a resolution authorizing the city of our Kansas City to purchase a new fire pump and gearbox for engine fifty-one, Conrad Fire Equipment, in the amount not to exceed sixty, well, in the amount of sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven oh five due to catast, catastrophic mechanical failure.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Is, is there a way to check the oil on those?
Uh, that's, that's one of those items that basically your mechanics and your EBTs kinda go through. We go through transmissions, oil in the motor. That's not one that typically anybody's gonna start looking at. Um, the tenth of this month, I got two more EBTs coming out to look over the AP and check on those, and then we'll have that. What I'm trying to do is get some guys that I've known in the past to come down and go all the way through the trucks so that maybe we can head this off at the pass, so we don't end up with it again. So, but that's typically an EBT skill. We don't have EBTs.
Okay.
No further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Does oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
City manager updates and reminders.
Okay. So on May first, uh, staff had a, uh, met with the KDOT and the construction company for a pre-construction meeting for the hike bike trail. Um, that is the one that's gonna start in Paris Park, uh, follow the Mill Canal down to, uh, First Street, and then down over to Summit to, they, it'll go to the, the Cali Sports, uh, Complex. And then it'll go back, uh, follow Summit, um, and go back to, uh, up Lincoln, and then tie back into the levee system. So, um, yeah, now start on May twenty-seventh, and they are scheduled to kinda go through till September timeframe, so. I believe. So that's pretty, pretty happy that's finally getting going. Um, on May fifteenth, uh, staff's gonna meet with, uh, Burns and Mack, uh, again. Um, you know, we, we finished the waste fire treatment plan a few years ago, and we knew, uh, with, with the design we went with there, um, just kinda rebuilding basically what was out there, that when the next permit cycle came around, we were probably gonna have to, uh, do chemicals, um, or, you know, there'll be some additional. You know, we saved on the capital expenditure at that time, but we're gonna probably have some chem, uh, higher chemical costs on the backside. So, but anyway, we're gonna start looking at that, you know, we're, we're gonna, we're kinda in that midway point of our permit cycle, so it's time to start thinking and looking at what the next permit may be and what's gonna take to meet that, and so.
So when is that, when is that permit?
Uh, that was a five to seven year, and so, you know, we're in year three.
Do we have that kinda in budget right now or not?
Well, you know, that's one of the things we kind of included in the budget was, uh, kinda starting to build up for the chemical costs. When we put together the rates back then, we included some, um, some projected chemical costs in that, so, um. But, uh, so anyway, that's, uh, that's, you know, gonna be coming around again real soon. Just, just finished the last project, and now I gotta start thinking about how we're gonna, you know, meet the next round of, uh, regulations. The Arnold Group, um, they, uh, completed the salary benchmarking and, uh, department head reviews of the compensation study. So they're now, uh, kinda incorporating the feedback from those meetings and preparing a final recommendation and presentation that you guys will be seeing here pretty soon. So, uh, that's just, it's moving along pretty good. So, you know, our plan is to have that finished up by the end of this month. So I'm gonna guess you'll probably see a presentation on that at the next commission meeting, cause we'll wanna incorporate those, uh, recommendations and changes into the twenty-twenty-six budget. So that's going there. The, um, the thirteen ways, I'm sorry, I tore, I had an old agenda on my desk. I tore up my notes, so I'm trying to piece them together again. The thirteen ways workshop is, we got one coming up this, this Thursday on the eighth at noon, and then there'll be another one on the twenty-ninth. And then in June, uh, these will be Mondays on the ninth and on the twenty-third, so, and I'll keep you guys posted on those, but, um, those are, so those are coming up soon, but the, the next one will be this Thursday at noon. So if you're planning on telling us now, we'll, we'll have, uh, have something for you to eat while you, with Chris Pay.
Um, I invited Artie Hicks with the Chamber and Jill Hunter with, uh, Visit Arkansas City. I don't know if either one of them will be able to make it.
Okay. Yeah, if you, I can try to remember this afternoon. Other than giving them some food, and we got plenty of room, so it's no big deal, so. Okay. On the budget, so the budget, uh, work session retreat's coming up. We'll have the staff and department heads on June sixth. The auditor will be here that morning. Uh, I think he's coming in ten, ten-thirty, uh, to present the audit to you guys. So we, but we, when did you guys wanna start on that? Um, do you wanna start around that ten, ten-thirty mark, or?
Let's get over earlier.
You wanna go earlier, no, earlier, or earlier?
Earlier.
Can we go earlier?
Yeah.
Go earlier?
Yeah, we, I mean, we could start as early as you want on it. You start at eight, get done early.
Six-thirty in the morning?
When you get out of bed, Charlie?
Six-thirty in the morning, Charlie.
So.
I'd say eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock.
Okay. Alright, uh, well, we'll, we can have some breakfast for you guys, and then we'll, hopefully we'll be done shortly, around lunchtime or after that, so, and then, um, then we'll have the.
And that's June, it's June the sixth?
Yeah, June sixth. And then we'll have the outside agency, uh, retreat on the thirteenth. And so, um, you guys want a similar timeframe in there, or you wanna think about that?
June what?
Thirteen.
Okay.
It'll be the following Friday. You wanna let Charlie sleep on that?
Do we give, do we give Charlie an opportunity to sleep in that day?
Well, you can let us know.
Yeah. Yeah.
And. Just the final thing is, uh, there is the environmental services, uh, monthly report, April's report on, um, no, I need to give that to you, give that. I got it in there, I'll get it for you. So I think that's all I've got. I'm sorry about the, this whole meeting's been kind of dysfunctional, hasn't it? Apologize.
We needed an extra week in between.
We had, we had people coming in the office, just, I went, it was just one after the others and that, so.
There's days like that. Items for discussion by the city commissioners. Have we got anything?
Cars and coffee in the two-hundred block of West Central, Saturday, that, from eight to eleven.
Okay.
So I have one thing, and I, because I'm, in my head, we went so fast through the, the consent agenda item. When the meeting started, we had an update, which I think I passed out. Did we talk about the, the new area for the CBG?
No.
Okay. While we're still here, can we still revisit that, Larry? Okay. And do I need to put it on the agenda for vote then, or how do I need to do that?
Okay, so CBG contacted, uh, Nick today. Um, you know, when we originally, uh, voted to apply for the, uh, CBG housing grant, we had a, a set area. Well, they, they're removing those set areas now, so it'll be the entire city, which is actually gonna be beneficial.
That's wonderful.
There was a, a lot of pre-applications, a lot of interest, spread out throughout the whole city. And this will, and this will allow a lot more people to be, um, eligible.
That's great.
This happened like right before the meeting, too, so everything has been happening at once.
So will that be posted for people to know? I mean, uh, if we get the grant, then we can.
Yeah, so all those folks that pre-applied, um, once, what, it, once, if we're awarded, then they'll be notified that we have actually got the award.
And when would that be? I mean, if we get awarded?
Um, I.
So what, what was in your packet was approving the public notice so that we can meet the next meeting on it, I believe. Read that and make sure I'm right, cause I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, that'll be at the next meeting.
And that updated one opened it to all, instead of just that little boundary that, that we had to pick before, which now is open, um, for a lot more opportunities.
This will be an agenda item, not a special hearing, right?
It will be a public hearing agenda item, correct? Not a special meeting, no. It's a regular meeting date for Tuesday the twentieth, May twentieth. But I need to get that publication in the paper with our approval, your approval. I like it when it does this, so you know it's coming. We know it's coming. We can plant ahead, so. In the public now, so I mean, they need to know too.
That it? Um, comments from audience? Anybody signed up for that, or?
I don't have anyone signed up. Did anyone here wish to speak?
I don't think, I don't think we, I don't think we need action.
Motion and second adjourned. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We are adjourned.
Thank you.